Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Chambers. My name is Bill Henry. I am the Councilman for the 4th District and Chair of the newly-formed Equity and Structure Committee of the Baltimore City Council. To my left is the Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Christopher Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And to his left is the remaining member of the committee, the Councilwoman from the 2nd District, Danielle McCray.
Thank you.
To my far-left, as I say often, is my Legislative Assistant Director of Communications, Casey Kelleher. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I have people hiding back behind me. To the far-right, behind me, we have Larry Green from the Office of Council Services and Rebecca Simmons from the Office of the President. And joining us in the audience, we have Nina Themelis from the Mayor's Office, Elena DePietro, and Victor Vola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
From the Law Department, and Bob Sennemy from the Department of Finance, Chair of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. There we go. Okay. I'm trying to -- it's all coming back. It's all coming back to me now. Tonight, we are going to be having the first of a series of hearings on several measures that are here, that have been proposed over the last several months to reform the structure of Baltimore City Government. We have a number of charter amendments that I'm going to read through relatively briefly. The first one is Bill 19-0379, Charter Amendment Ordinance of Estimates, for the purpose of authorizing the City Council to amend the ordinance of estimates to increase items of appropriation or add items for new purposes subject to certain limitations, deleting the requirement that supplementary appropriations be recommended by the Board of Estimates, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Actually, is there just a straight list of -- it'd be hard to find there. Okay, we're -- we'll keep paging through the -- we'll page through the long way. 19-0380 Charter Amendment Vetoes, for the purpose of modifying the vote by which the Council may override a mayoral veto, repealing the mayoral authority to veto items of appropriation, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. 19-0381 Charter Amendment Removal of Elected Officials, for the purpose of providing for the removal from office by the City Council of certain city-elected officials under certain circumstances, expanding the potential individuals or entities entitled to prefer charges for consideration of removal from office, conforming and clarifying related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. 19-0382 Charter Amendment City Administrator, for the purpose of establishing the position of City Administrator as the Chief Administrative Officer of Baltimore City, establishing how the City Administrator is appointed and removed, establishing the powers and duties of the City Administrator, establishing that the City Administrator shall appoint a deputy City Administrator and certain other staff, providing that the City Administrator may appoint and remove certain municipal officials, clarifying and conforming related provisions, generally relating to the position of City Administrator, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Bill 19-0441 Charter Amendment Charter Review Commission, for the purpose of requiring a Charter Review Commission be appointed at least once every 10 years to review and make recommendations for necessary deletions, additions, or revisions to the city charter, providing for the term of the commission, setting forth the manner of the commission's appointment, providing for the commission's duties, requiring that the commission be dissolved on the completion of its duties, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. City Council Bill 19-0467 Charter Amendment Vetoes, Timing of Override, for the purpose of modifying and clarifying the time within which the Council may consider to override a mayoral veto, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. And just finally think -- yeah. And the final one, Bill 19-0470 Charter Amendment City Council Exercise of Legislative Powers, for the purpose of modifying and clarifying the City Council's authority to legislate certain powers and duties of all units of the executive branch, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. So the way this hearing is going to work is I'm going to give, those of my colleagues who wish to speak to the specific charter amendments that they sponsored, a moment or two to give a brief synopsis of what the amendment is intended to do and why it's been introduced. Then we're going to go to the agencies, Finance and Law, and go through their reports on each of the charter amendments. And I'm going to ask the committee to go easy on the back-and-forth because we will have additional opportunity in the future to ask more questions or get clarifications from Law and Finance on their reports. I'd like to get as quickly as possible to public testimony because this is a public hearing. And what I would hope would be, the primary purpose of this would be, we, the committee, will get a chance to hear the public input on each of these proposals. There will be future work sessions on all of these, and those work sessions will be held at a variety of locations around Baltimore City in a hope that we can increase the number of our citizens that can more easily come out and talk to the City Council about these proposals. So if you want to say something about one or more of these amendments tonight, you will be free to do so. This will not be your last chance. So if you think of something after you've already spoken, don't worry that you need to come back up and say it again tonight. There will be further opportunities. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to the Vice Chair and see if he'd like to speak to the charter amendment about removal of city officers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for coming out on this very important series of conversations around revisions to the charter. So this one does a few key things. So it's Bill 19-0381 Removal of Elected Officials. Currently, the City Council can remove the Council President for a incompetency, willful neglect of duty, misdemeanor in office, or charges referred by the mayor. The City Council can also remove other council members for a similar set of actions taken by those members. There is no ability to remove the mayor. And last -- was it last year? When there was a lot of turmoil going on with the previous administration, we heard from constituents all over the City of Baltimore, "Why isn't the City Council doing anything about this? Why aren't you removing the mayor? Why is the mayor not stepping down?" And simply, this is a response to those calls for action. So it's something that I ran on or wanted to see happen, and unfortunately, it's a tool that I -- fortunately, it's a tool I hope we never actually have to use. The voters put us in, they should be the ones who vote us out. And so the thinking should be that elections are term limits, elections are accountability. And so this is not something that I was -- felt comfortable coming forward with. However, my perspective is that when -- if the provisions are already in the charter to remove our colleagues, then there should also be a counterbalance and a check and balance that exists between the legislative branch that we represent and the administration of which we seek to hold accountable. So this bill does a few things. One, it raises the threshold, the current threshold, from 2/3rds to 3/4ths to remove the other council members and the council president. And then it adds language to be able to remove the mayor. And again, same instances. That's the short version of it.
Short is good.
I will note, though, that in future sessions, it didn't come with this tonight, that one of the things I -- feedback I got from the public about this bill was that this entire process is still centered in City Hall, and people wondered why we just couldn't do a special election or to remove the mayor or some -- or recall, not special election, a recall. State law does not allow us to, to answer that question. We are not able to add a recall. Frankly, if we were, I'd be supportive of that. But, you know, session is in right now in Annapolis. People can take that to our state officials and give us the authorizing ability to do that. So what I -- in lieu of that, I am working on an amendment to add a referendum element to this, similar to the way that the voters can add, can create charter amendments, can move charter amendments with signatures. I do want to, consulting with the Law Department, I see you guys looking at me like, "I didn't hear about this." The idea is I want to be able to add a public element to trigger this process as well. So that if the Council isn't willing to move on this, and the public feels that they feel strongly enough that they should be able to remove officials, I think that this is a missing piece in this bill. My team is going to be working with the Department of Legislative Reference to draft language, to propose to this body to consider and for the public to consider. I want to -- I want this to be as transparent as possible, but again, at any rate, I hope we never have to use this. And with that, I'll stop and take a step back.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. I'm going to go through the three quickly that I sponsored, which were 19-0379, the Charter Amendment Ordinance of Estimates. This is actually the second time that I have proposed this charter amendment. The idea is about not so much eliminating the strong mayoral system of government, but trying to make a tweak to it to give the Council a little bit more power relative to the mayor in the running of the city. Right now, the charter only allows the City Council to cut from the city budget each year. We are not able to increase lines of appropriation unilaterally. We can, by negotiating with the mayor, get the mayor to submit supplemental appropriations to add more money to something if we agree on something we're going to cut. But if the mayor flatly refuses to increase an appropriation, right now, there is literally no recourse for the City Council to reprioritize the budget. And so this amendment would allow the Council to do that. The second one that I introduced was 19-0380 Charter Amendment Vetoes. Right now, the charter requires that the Council get 75% of the body to vote to override a mayor's veto. So if we pass a bill and the mayor decides that that's not a good idea and vetoes it, we have to get 12 of the 15 members of the City Council to vote to override that veto. I've done some research over the years, and that is the highest standard of any local legislative body that I could find in the United States of America. The majority of other cities have, as does our state -- I'm sorry, as does the United States of America in Congress, uses a 2/3rds threshold in which the Council would only need to get 10 out of 15 votes to override. I even found some cities that do 60%, and one or two that admittedly somewhat bizarrely go with a simple majority. So basically, if the Council votes by majority again, that is enough to override the mayor's wishes on the topic. This, again, is about not so much eliminating the strong mayoral system of government as much as it's about trying to give the Council a little bit more power relative to the mayor in that relationship. And then the last one of mine is the final one, 19-0470 Charter Amendment City Council Exercise of Legislative Powers. Right now, many of the city agencies that are described or set up in the city charter are protected, in a way, from having the City Council pass legislation that dictates their operations. Because if such legislation gets introduced, the Law Department will often find that just the idea of trying to require this department or the head of this department to do something infringes upon the charter authority of the department or the department head. Because in the charter, we give rather sweeping power to the agency heads to be in charge of everything that that agency is supposed to be dealing with. And what this charter amendment would do is it would basically close that loophole by adding a provision that makes it clear that the agency heads have that wide sweeping power unless the mayor and City Council direct by ordinance that they do something in specific. This is one which would not interfere with the mayor's ability to negotiate with the Council about any given law, but it would mean that the Council would have at least the ability to put that legislation out and have it fairly considered by both the legislative process and the mayor in the course of going through that process. That's it for -- oh, I'm sorry. We've been joined by our colleague, Councilman John Bullock of the 9th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, and I did not introduce at the beginning of the meeting Sam Johnson from Office of Council Services Staff to the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
At this point, I think we are ready to go to agency reports. And what I would ask, let's start with Law and then we'll do Finance. What I would ask is if you want to just pick out the issues that the Law Department has with any of these, I'll just ask if your report is favorable or unfavorable -- I'm sorry, if your report is favorable, and if your report is not favorable, if you have any comments or suggestions to the committee, this would be the time to share them. So the first one would be 19-0379 Charter Amendment Ordinance of Estimates. I think that was a favorable report? No?
No, it was with amendments.
Favorable with amendments. Thank you.
I think that might be correct.
Oh, you need to use the microphone because this is being recorded and shown on Cable 25.
Okay. So, as you explained, you already explained it, so I want to repeat what you said. But our first issue with the bill was that while it allowed for increases as well as reductions, it didn't provide for the check on the increases, the way there's a little bit of a check on reductions, for those things that might be required by various laws or Board of Arbitration, the Fire Department, that kind of stuff. So we suggest that you mirror those same types of things for increases. The other thing that, and I'm not sure if you talked about this part of the bill, there's a part of the bill that eliminates the requirement that supplemental appropriations be recommended by the Board of Estimates. And the Law Department felt that that was so inconsistent as to be -- that it wouldn't be enforceable with respect to the rest of the charter provisions on the Board of Estimates. Because as we all know, the charter gives the Board of Estimates the power to formulate and execute the fiscal policy of the city. And that ability would, you know, involves being able to predict and oversee future spending. So, and they are the ones that are most intimately involved in the creation of the budget to begin with. So we felt that cutting them out of that process might result in supplementary appropriations that aren't consistent with what is available in the budget at any given time. And also, it would be difficult for the City Council to be able to assess the other requirements for supplemental appropriations that, you know, they weren't available at the time of the passing of the ordinance of estimates. There's a bunch of different types of provisions that make requirements for different types of supplemental appropriations. So we felt that those were the problems with the bill.
And the next one, City Council Bill 19-0380 Charter Amendment Vetoes.
I think we were able to approve that one. There were no problems with it. Let me double-check my report.
And just as a clarification for viewers at home, when the Law Department says that they approve something, what they really mean is they approve it for legal sufficiency in form.
Correct.
And that it's not -- it's not a law we can't pass. Not that they're encouraging us to do so, they're simply signing off on its feasibility.
We're not speaking to whether this is a good idea or not, we're just saying that it's an appropriate subject for a charter amendment introduced by the City Council.
Then let's move to 19-0381 Charter Amendment Removal of Elected Officials.
Okay. That's another one that was mine. The issue with this bill is that in Maryland, although the legislature has broad authority to provide for the appointment and removal of officials, the case law says that that is true unless there's a constitutional provision or a charter provision that already defines the removal, appointment or removal process. In this case, there is a constitutional provision in Article 15, Section 2 of the Maryland Constitution that applies to any elected official in the state or county within the state who is convicted of a or pleased nola contendra to any crime, which is a felony or which is a misdemeanor related to his public duties and responsibilities and involves moral turpitude, and for which the penalty may be incarceration. Under this provision, there's no vote by anybody. If those factors apply, the official is removed by operation of law. On the proposed charter amendments and even parts of our existing charter, we've never had -- it's never been tested because we really haven't had to do, go through a proceeding to remove anybody under our charter. But the wording of the bill would draw into the charter some of the offenses that were -- that would be considered covered by the constitutional provision. So our assessment of it is that if a offense by an elected official is a crime or is a felony or misdemeanor covered under the wording of the constitutional provision, then the constitutional provision has to apply, and those officials are removed by operation of law. If, however, it is another type of offense that the City Council has determined is appropriate for removal under their, under the charter, that is not covered by the state constitutional provision, that you could apply your own process of, you know, charges being offered by the appropriate body and the vote by the City Council for removal.
Okay. Let me make sure I understand what you're saying, that because the Maryland state constitution already has a provision, which is the provision that I think has been exercised, which is if you're convicted of a felony.
Right.
Then you are no longer capable of holding office.
Right. It's a felony and misdemeanors that are related to their public duties, involve moral turpitude, and are potentially punishable by incarceration.
But those are all at the point of conviction in a court of law.
Right.
So are you saying that?
Well, I think ours, your -- I'll have to go back and check. Did the charter provision say conviction? I thought it did.
So, right, and that's where.
Right. So they both say conviction.
I was confused with your report because this, what we're saying, this is essentially impeachment in lieu of conviction or ahead of conviction essentially, which is the same power that Congress has and has executed right now.
Well, as soon as charges, though, and, you know, the trial or whatever proceeds with respect to something covered by the Constitution, if you guys are at the same place in the process, or, I mean, if you're ahead of them in the process, I guess you can keep going. But if you're not, as soon as a conviction occurs that would trigger that provision, you guys have to stop whatever you're doing.
I think that makes total sense. And, right. So this would be, again, ahead of any conviction, and I would defer back to the situation last year. If that was the law that we were following, technically, the previous mayor could still be the mayor right now, today, almost a year later, after everything occurred. This prevents that from taking place and provides an additional check to say, "There's enough information here, enough evidence." It also creates a public hearing process, a public input process. I mean, it's, this is not easy to do either, but it would be ahead of any conviction, which could draw out for years. And it adds to already-existing provisions in the charter that apply to council members and the comptroller. I forgot to mention that in my opening statement, that we already have language for comptroller, we already have language for council president, we already have language for council members in the charter already. This just extends it one extra step. But thank, yes, point taken that if there is a conviction, and maybe there's ways that we can make that more clear in the charter amendment itself, and I'm happy to work, obviously, offline or in the work sessions, to add further clarification so that we don't.
Right. I mean, I think the amendment that we offered gives some clarity to the types of situations where the Constitution would apply. So I think it would be important to incorporate that regardless.
Okay. Sam pointed out that maybe it would be a little bit less confusing if we take both the reports from Law and Finance, one amendment at a time, rather than going through everything and then going back and going through everything again. So if we could, did Finance have comments on the removal of elected officials, Amendment
So, not many. Just wanted to say we don't object to the bill. Just from a fiscal standpoint, I mean, there are procedures where, you know, somebody elevates into the new role and they get paid the same because that's written into the law. So from a fiscal standpoint, there's really no impact.
Okay.
And no further comments from there.
And let me just go back quickly and ask, did Finance have any comments on 19-0380 Charter Amendment Vetoes?
I do have some pretty extensive comments on 0379 and 0380 because they're so.
Do you want to do those together?
I can do those together. I can come up.
Okay. Oh, you can do them from there.
So first, good evening. My name is Bob Sennemy. I'm the Budget Director for the City, representing Department of Finance tonight. And first wanted to speak to, if it's okay, on 19-0379, which is the Ordinance of Estimates bill. And before I jump into the details of the bill, just, you know, we took a careful look at all of these bills. I saw, you know, often when we have something that happened like we had last year, there's, I feel like there's a rush to kind of look for solutions. And we tried to take the idea of, "Let's step back and think about what we think the problem is." And when I looked at these bills, I saw two problems that I think. One is the structure of government and the balance of power, and one is the, what I would call, some of the bills kind of speak to more, you know, professionalizing or modernizing the city government. And I say on the first one, we don't think that's necessarily the issue which we'll speak to, but we do believe that there are definitely functions in parts of the government that need to be modernized and professionalized. Some of those get into some of the things like the Charter Review and the City Administrator. But on the balance of power, we think that where we have, where we are today is okay. And I'll explain that on the Ordinance of Estimate one specifically. So as you had said, Mr. Chair, this bill makes two changes. One is that the Council can reappropriate or make changes to the ordinance of estimates rather than just cut items. And the other is that they could directly propose spending bills or supplemental appropriations without going to the Board. So I think that both of those changes combined, they might seem small on paper, but I think they would have a significant impact on the city's financial health. And let me explain why we think that is. Three things, really. First, from a balance of power standpoint, the current process, it does put a lot of weight onto the executive, onto the mayor. And we think that having financial accountability in one person is not a bad thing. In my experience, and I've been here. In my experience, and I've been here for thirteen years now, I've been in every single budget meeting with every mayor going back now about a decade, and what I have experienced is that.
It's been a disturbingly large number of mayors.
It is a disturbingly large number of mayors. But what I've experienced is that the mayors don't necessarily love the financial piece of it because it kind of forces them to make difficult choices, but they take it very seriously because they know that if there's anything that goes wrong, that the buck stops with them essentially. This bill, by, you know, drastically reduce, not, I wouldn't say drastically, but by reducing the authority of the mayor and allowing the council to make significant revisions to the ordinance, I fear basically diffuses the power a little bit, and I'm worried that we, rather than having one person who clearly knows they're accountable, we would have a larger group of people, nobody's really sure who's accountable. So I think we have to keep that in mind as we look at this bill. So again, in my experience, the mayors have taken that, that process very seriously when they, when they put the budget together. I think the second point we'd like to make is thinking about the budget development process as a whole from beginning to end. From the council's perspective, council sees it mostly towards the end of the process. They see the preliminary budget come out in March or the beginning of April and then going through the public process. The budget development process for us, for our staff, I mean, we start in July and August putting it together. And, you know, long before the council sees it, our staff is trying to put all the pieces into place, and there are a lot of technical parts of the budget that it's good that, you know, we have a strong mayor that can defer to his professionals in the finance department and the planning department, I should say, on capital, to make the right decisions and make sure the budget is structured properly. What I mean by that is there are, almost half of the budget is what we would call fixed costs, things like pension contributions, retiree health benefits, what we should budget for workers' compensation, payments that we need to make to the city school system, debt service payments, those are not things that we just drop on a piece of, there's a lot of work that goes into understanding those, and you can find a lot of examples of cities that have botched those things pretty badly and have gotten into a lot of trouble. So in today's world, the mayor, because they feel accountable, they, it's very important to them to hire professional staff and finance and defer to them and make sure those things are taken care of. Even in the discretionary part of the budget, some of the things we have the policy discussions on when we get to the, you know, the council phase of the budget, even a lot of that is not really truly discretionary. You know, the city signs agreements with labor unions about what pay rates will be or certain work rules, some of that stuff is kind of baked. You know, we have cost for building rental and vehicle costs, you know, healthcare benefits, things of that nature. We also put a lot of work into making sure that we have a budget that is realistic and accurate when, before it gets to the, to the city council. And again, in the current setup, the mayor has to defer to finance and to a lesser degree planning because his or her, you know, job is on the line. If there's something that goes wrong, that person is accountable. And I think in today's world, we have some assurance, I know there have been disagreements between the mayor and the city council, but I think there's some assurance knowing that the staff that we have within our department, that we've taken an accurate look at and a realistic look at, you know, what can we spend on day-to-day services and operations, but that we've also weighed those longer-term financial liabilities and that we've carefully thought of those things before the budget even gets to council. I would also say, later in the budget process, in the development process, the council does have some leverage in the process, they don't have a lot, but they do have some, and the council has used that leverage over the last couple of years to negotiate with the mayor to have post-budget adoptions. And I actually went back and looked, and in six of the last eight fiscal years, the mayor agreed to make changes as part of the budget after the council passed it because they heard the feedback from the council. I think that process allows for good-faith negotiations between the two parties, but it prevents against these just unilateral revisions to the ordinance of estimates that would move items of appropriation all over the place. So again, I think the process today is orderly, it allows for some negotiations, and if there are disagreements, the mayor has shown over the last few years that they are willing to make some concessions if there's things, if there's things that the council has a consensus that need to be, need to be changed. So that was the second item. And then the final piece is the post-adoption monitoring of the budget. This is the one that I have the most concerns about frankly. After the budget is adopted, our practice is that we go through monthly and in a more detailed fashion, quarterly, do a projection of where we stand versus the adopted budget. We first counsel the mayor on that and then we share that. We have quarterly reviews with the city council to show the council where we stand. We generally counsel the mayor to be super cautious about protecting surplus revenue because there are unexpected things that happen later in the year. I can't tell you how many times I've come to a hearing and we've said, here's where we look after the first quarter or the first four months or five months, and people are ready to spend the money, and then we've had a lot of strange things happen near the end of fiscal years. We had Twenty Sixth Street collapse, we had civil unrest, we've had giant snowstorms, enormous snowstorms that have cost more than we budgeted. So our, when we urge the mayor to not commit to anything before we get to the end of the year, that's for a reason, and the mayor has generally listened to us on that. This bill, by allowing the council to come with supplemental spending bills without going through the board of estimates, that skips, not only the board of estimates, really skips finance, because when something comes to the board of estimates, it's really because we've evaluated and we say, we absolutely have to spend this revenue for some unanticipated cost. If the council has the.
And for supplementals, do they, I mean, I know that technically they originate at the board of estimates.
Right.
But effectively, do they originate in finance?
They do.
With finance coming to the board and saying, hey, there's money here that could be moved and there's money, there's a lack of money over here that we need to address?
That's right. They generally, they generally come out of those quarterly reviews with the mayor, and we generally don't come until the end of the year. If we know we have a spending issue in a particular agency, we'll share that with the mayor and the council throughout the year, but we'll wait until the third quarter to make sure we take care of that all as a package. And in this process, the council would have the ability to just come with spending bills, and that feels to me a little bit chaotic. I mean, you could have multiple competing spending bills, not knowing what the revenue sources are or if there is a revenue source that's really sustainable, and that to me just sounds, that invites a lot of uncertainty in the process, which we feel very uncomfortable with. I think in closing, you know, again, those three points, kind of the executive authority, the budget process as it is, and then the post-budget monitoring, I think there's problems in all those areas. I think just in closing, I would also remind folks here that the process has served the city pretty well financially. Baltimore has a lot of problems and we acknowledge that, but from a financial standpoint, we're in pretty good shape. We have a, we have a double A bond rating, which when you compare us to other like cities, it's remarkable. I mean, we've looked at other cities, and what that tells us is that it's a signal that we've done a pretty good job of managing the finances, even under a situation where we've lost population, we've lost revenue, we've had all the challenges over the past decade and plus with, you know, declining, you know, population and all the other service demands that we have on the city. That bond rating, it gives us, it's a signal to folks that we're stable, that we're well-managed, and it also gives us low-cost access to credit markets to borrow money for capital projects. If you lose that, you can go into a tailspin very quickly. We also have a history of having long-serving financial leaders, which I think is a good thing, and it's kind of a virtuous cycle. What I've seen here in my career is that we have a stable process, an orderly process, that attracts professional people that want to be here and serve their career, and then that in turn, having them, leads to another round of stability and, you know, good financial planning. So we have this virtuous process cycle now, and I think even small changes like this, however small they seem, they have the potential to really upset a very delicate balance. And again, I respect the folks on the council and we work very closely on things, but I fear that in the heat of the moment, there's the possibility for more arbitrary spending decisions that don't think about the long-term health of the city, and that could be very dangerous for the city for this particular bill. So I can pause there and take any questions on, on that piece of it.
I'm going to look to see if there are any questions. I will say that in about twenty-five years in and out of this building, questioning the merits and benefits of the strong mayor system, that's like the second or third most cogent defense of it that I've heard. Still haven't, still not buying it, but okay, but it was a really good, okay. Councilman Burnett?
I mean, one thing I would note with this provision is a few things, and I'm sorry, I'm going to go back and forth, but you got me on the best chair. One, have you looked at other municipalities? Because what is being proposed, we would not, the Baltimore City Council would not be the first or the only to do this. In fact, we're one of the last municipalities, large, mid-cities, large-sized cities that don't have the ability or authority or oversight or any accountability to moving things within the budget. And so one, I'd say, in that assessment, if you could provide other cities that have comparable ratings to the committee but also have a strong mayor system, I'd wager, without having done research at this point yet, that there are probably a mix of structures of similarly sized cities that have a delineation authority. We know that the city of Baltimore has one of the strongest mayoral systems in the country, yet we know that there are other cities that also have the authority to, their legislative body does have more input into the budgetary process. The other thing I just note, just from, you know, hearing about this particular provision and why members of the community are supportive of this idea, is that effectively, while, yes, having one individual does provide stability, it does not spread the accountability that the citizens of Baltimore are demanding of city hall. So essentially, you have fifteen elected officials who are on the sidelines in the decision-making process that even by your own admission, the council gets the budget at the end of the process. So yes, it would seem tumultuous if we were coming forward with appropriations to a document that we don't get to see until a few weeks before we have to vote on and have no voice in that, in shaping that process, yet every four years, I have to go before the constituents in my district, and I'm asked, what is your platform? What do you want to see? What are you, why are you spending so much money here or there? And for, I don't know, I guess it's always been the rule, in the city of Baltimore, people in my position have had to say, well, I can't even be accountable to this, right? I have no voice in this process. And so I think there has to be some sort of balance where we, we want the accountability. I want to be held accountable for spending decisions and where that money's going, but unfortunately, yeah, we can cut and negotiate, but if you have an administrator that says, go kick rocks, then we're kicking rocks, right? And my feet hurt right now, man, I'm tired of that. Like, I think we have to, and people, again, in the city of Baltimore have said, like, we want to know where you stand on these things and what you're going to do about these set of problems, often of which, many of these problems are not solved by legislation but by funding priorities that we've since put in the bucket of one person. So I'll step off the soapbox and just say that, one, I would like a, an assessment of other municipalities in good fiscal health that have a legislative body that does, that is able to move the priorities put forth to us and the demands put forth to us by our constituents.
And actually, let me just, before he relinquishes the soapbox entirely, I will point out, I made the same observation. You made a good point when you say that the council gets the budget kind of at the end of the process.
Yep.
The charter doesn't address this, and to the best of my knowledge, I don't think there's a lot in the code that really speaks to how the budget development process works over the course of the year. It is nothing but policy and culture that keeps that budget formulation process entirely within the administration until the end, when the board of estimates sends it to the council as legislation. There is nothing stopping the Budget Bureau from bringing the council in earlier in the process, making sure that the council fully understands all of the different issues that are being weighed, and the level of good counsel that you're proud of giving to the mayor along with the planning department for the capital budget, I would see no reason why the council could not also benefit, oh, that's going to sound weird, the city council could not benefit from your good budget council in that regard. But what might be, what might come out of it is the budget that comes before the city council every year is literally the budget priorities of one individual person, the mayor. The mayor is working with you and planning to decide, as you said, to make the hard calls of this or that. And the people of Baltimore, whether they realize it or not, the people of Baltimore expect that the city council that they're electing is part of that budget prioritization. And it is somewhere between painful and ineffective to simply try to say to them every year, yeah, we can't really do anything, we can't, we can't open a new rec center, we can't add a new library because only the mayor can spend money, we can only cut it. I have been saying that to people for the entire twelve years I've been on the council, and I've been saying that for the twelve years before it, where I'd worked here and knew that and was trying to explain to my neighbors and friends that you gotta bang on the mayor if you want something, if you want money spent. And that, I think, is where this whole larger push for having a conversation to restructure government is coming from. Because as people become aware of how things actually work now and realize that the status quo is in conflict with what they expect, we need to do something to make adjustments. And that's why I said at the very beginning, some of these are tweaks. They don't eliminate the strong mayor system of government, they just shift that power dynamic. There is a charter amendment that is not in this group here that I know has been proposed but not yet introduced, that would actually remove the director of public works and the city solicitor from the board of estimates, and in doing so, would, in my opinion, would eliminate the strong mayor system of government because we really have a government that is run or steered by the board of estimates. And we call it a strong mayor system because the mayor utterly controls the board of estimates. If no one person controls the board of estimates, then we don't have a strong mayor system of government anymore. These are, to my way of looking at it, not as drastic as that, but they all go to a strong desire that we have all sensed over the last several years, that people want to see the power to set budget priorities diffused among a broader circle than one.
So there's a lot there, let me try to respond because yours is fresh, and then I'll come back to yours, Councilman Burnett. So on the, in terms of bringing in the council earlier, you're correct in that the charter really just focuses on kind of the public presentation and kind of the passage. There's a lot of work that goes on upfront, like I talked about, that me and our, myself and our staff do, but in terms of that collaboration, there is a lot of room for movement there, I agree. That, what I've seen is that in practice, it generally depends on the mayor and what they want to do, so there is a little flexibility. I think that could be done better frankly, and that's something I think that we, we as an office, but also, you know, the mayor can do better about bringing folks in. You know, one thing about, in terms of the other jurisdictions, and it's actually kind of related to this point, I think, I'd said earlier, when, my experience has been when the mayors kind of, become the mayor, they kind of don't love right away the finances because it's hard. It's hard, so what generally I've seen is that, you know, you have a lot of input and there's a lot of different policy interest on different people in the council, and it's radically different across members, and that should be expected. Everybody comes from a different background and a different district. But when the mayor sits in that seat, the frustrating thing, I think, in their first couple of months, is they're like, oh shoot, now I have to decide between one thing and the other. And I, so I think to your point, Councilman Burnett, one of the reasons, yes, there are other cities, we have looked at other cities, I don't have a full list of everything, but generally, we are on the very strong mayor side of the, of the coin for sure, we definitely acknowledge that. But when you have a city that's under such constant fiscal stress as we are, we're a poor city, I think we're well-managed financially over a long period of time, but there's a lot of stress on the city. You can see coming up, we've talked about the Kerwin issue, that we could be, you know, asked to spend tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars or more, we're probably going to experience an economic slowdown, knock on wood, at some point in the next couple of years. It's helpful to have, I appreciate the need for collaboration, but it is helpful to have the one person that can kind of pull the machine and to say, we have to do this, this is absolutely necessary, and to really take that step to drive it. So I agree that we've. to drive it. So I agree that we've been lacking a little bit on kind of collaboration. What I've noticed is the mayor, after they go through a couple of cycles, they realize how difficult it is, and they kind of shut off sometimes other input because the choices are so hard that they know that they can't please everybody individually, but they can make some concessions on collective priorities of the body as a whole, is the way I would describe it. Does that answer the?
Yeah, I think, you know, again, we can continue the conversation around looking at other cities and how they do it and see if there's some nuance here. Again, I felt a pushback. I think putting all of your eggs in one basket is also how we've gotten here, right? We're reliant on one person to make very difficult decisions, yet the citizens of Baltimore are tasked with electing, what, how many is the total of us? You know, 18 of us? Total, 18 individuals are elected by the citizens of Baltimore, 17, by the citizens of Baltimore, to make prior, make decisions that are affecting their daily lives. And a lot of those decisions involve money, right? Where is the money going? Why are you putting it here? We want you to put it there. I get asked. You know, these are, I don't want to belabor the point, but you get it, like, in that, like, this is a, not, for me, it's not about shifting power dynamics as much as it's about shifting accountability. You have folks who are literally a body that is unaccountable to the people who have elected them when it comes to the budget, the budget, which is the most important policy document that we pass every year. Hands down, there's nothing more important than this, yet we are on the sidelines. We're asking to get in the game so that if we are also, if we're making bad decisions or proposing bad ideas, that they can hold us accountable for those bad ideas. Right now, they have one person who's likely to be the least accessible to them as well, right? The probability of somebody bumping into the mayor at the grocery store is pretty slim. I was just there last night and bumped into three constituents along the way who had ideas for me and things that they wanted me to do. And so I think that in some of, and I often had that conversation, "Look, I'm with you on this. I'm happy to push this forward, but I have no way to control where the money's going or to fund this thing that you want to see in your community." And so I want to be held accountable for those decisions. I don't like to make those deferrals. I want to be at the table making every decision, and I know my colleagues do as well. And so I think that we can look at other municipalities and see if there's some nuance that we can strike that preserves the fiscal health of the city, which is incredibly important, but spreads the accountability throughout the entirety of City Hall.
Good comments. Thanks for that. I don't have anything.
Okay, then I think we're gonna move on to, oh, Councilwoman McCray.
Bear with me because I'm a little under the weather. I just want to make sure I understood you. You said that six of the last eight fiscal years, the city council did go into, the mayor did make changes based off of negotiations or discussions with the city council. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. The way it's played out is if the council as a whole has, you know, some kind of, you know, joint priority, they'll go to the mayor, you know, when the budget's presented, say, "Hey, look, we really want this to be different." And since the council can only cut as the law allows, what has been done in practice is the mayor has said, "If you will pass the ordinance that has been submitted to you, I will agree to come on July 1st and make..."
So I get that part. I just want to make sure you said six of the last eight.
Yeah, in six of the last eight years, there were budget adjustments that were done on essentially July 1st of that year, and they came out of the budget negotiation. So the two years that they didn't, there was kind of collective, like, things looked pretty good. There was collective agreement that it looked okay. But in those other years, there was those agreements made. And I can tell you for sure from being involved in those, those weren't just random transfer bills that came out. They came out of our negotiations. So my point was that the current power that's vested in both the mayor and the city council does leave some room for, you know, talking about those priorities, and the mayor has made some changes. And in those cases, if there were things that were added that the council wanted, the mayor had to drop something that was in his or her budget when it was proposed. So they have made some compromises on those issues.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, then I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna move to the next one, which is 190382 Charter Amendment, City Administrator.
Mr. Chair, just, if you mind, we had just a couple of brief comments on the veto bill that was, do you want to go back to that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Is that okay? Yeah, is that okay? They'll be brief. Some of them are in line with our comments here. But the one thing we wanted to point out, so on the veto bill, the bill would change the requirement to override from two-thirds to three-fourths.
Other way around.
I'm sorry, three-fourths to two-thirds. And it would also eliminate the line item veto on appropriation. So on the first point, going from three-fourths to two-thirds, most of the arguments that we would have there kind of echo what I just said, that by giving a little bit more power to the council, you do risk that there could be short-term, you know, arbitrary decisions made in combination with, you know, a council person might have a specific interest and propose a bill, and...
If it was just us, I'd let that go, but I feel obliged, speaking on behalf of the council, to ask that you use a different word than arbitrary.
So what I mean by that is that in the heat of the moment, when we have those discussions, there can be, you know, things, council often wants to add money for certain programs or certain things that are kind of near and dear to their heart or to their district. And the question is, what gets tossed overboard? My fear is that you would toss overboard potentially, or the risk is you toss overboard one of those things that is leading to better long-term health. We could underfund our pensions, or we could make a cut to health benefits, when we know we have to set a certain level of money for those particular priorities. So that's what I mean. It's probably not the best choice of words, but that's what I mean, is that that risk is there, that those decisions can get made.
I'll tell you what, between now and the next work session, you look for a better word.
Okay. And then the other, the other point on this bill is the mayor has a line item veto on items of appropriation. And this is, I think, very problematic because the way we think of this, well, removing it, I think, is problematic. And the reason is, is that the ordinance in and of itself, it's one giant piece of legislation with a bunch of line items. And the way we have looked at this, and the mayor has very rarely had to use the veto power, has chosen to exercise it, I should say. But if the council does choose to change a line item, and this provision of the charter allows the mayor to just veto that one item and then let the entire budget go forward. And so what, this means that if you have even just a small disagreement on the budget, and there's one thing that there's a disagreement on, the rest of the budget can go forward. By taking out that line item veto, our fear is that you could have a small item of disagreement in the budget turn into the entire budget being held up and turn it into like a larger political stalemate. And, you know, I don't like to use the word, like, you know, shut down, because we've kind of looked at the law and we've known that, like, if there was like some kind of stalemate like that, we could move forward. But I don't think that's in our interest for our stakeholders, you know, and by stakeholders, I mean our citizens, our vendors, our creditors, our employees, to see those kind of stalemates over the entire budget and fear that we're not going to be able to continue, you know, delivering city services and operations. So that provision, I think, is meant to allow for those disagreements that do come out of the budget occasionally, but to let most of the budget continue to go forward so that we can hit the ground running on July 1st and that the large majority of the budget goes through. So those were our comments on 1380, or 0380.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on now to 19382 Charter Amendment, City Administrator. And I think we'll start with the Law Department, and then if Finance has comments on that, we'll go there next.
Good afternoon. I'm Vic Turvola from the City Law Department. Let me say at the outset that we've been in contact with the President's Office since I dropped the bill report in, trying to work out or how we might accommodate the intent of the framers behind this legislation. I haven't offered recommendations on how to fix this bill because I couldn't exactly tell what you were trying to do with it.
Yeah.
It creates a sort of a hybrid form of government, somewhere between a strong mayor form of government and a council manager form of government, but actually doesn't create any one of those. It's this hybrid thing. And you can create either form, and the Law Department would help you create either form. But it's difficult to create this particular hybrid form because there's a lot of, and in this particular bill, there's a lot of inconsistencies, which I point out in my bill report, and I can go through them here. Suffice to say that the Law Department is not willing to sign the bill for form and legal sufficiency as it's currently drafted, not because it's watered down, the mayor's power in any way, but it is because the provisions just don't seem consistent to us.
I'm just gonna pause to say that this charter amendment is sponsored by the council president, who had originally expected to be here tonight. He's unable to be here. And so you don't feel that you need to go into the details of that because I expect that we will have a more detailed conversation about this particular amendment at one of the work sessions that he's able to participate in directly, so that he can speak to what his proposal is trying to accomplish. And you guys should have that back and forth at that time.
That's perfect. I'll stand aside.
Okay, thank you. Finance?
Sure, just a couple of brief comments. I think, you know, going back to my comments at the very beginning, we think this is one of the big, this is trying to get at one of the big problems, that we need to modernize and professionalize city government. And again, from my experience looking over many years, frankly, we've seen a lot of people that were not qualified to do the jobs that they were asked to do. And a lot of those things end up manifesting as what you see as budget issues, when I know internally it's because somebody's not managing something correctly. So this, I think, is a good idea, that trying to get to the step of having some level of professional management within the city government. You know, running a city, it's a massive undertaking, but it's also not rocket science. There's lots of other people that do this. So our frustration generally over time has been, you know, there are best practices that we should be using in delivery of services, and sometimes we don't get that as quickly as we should. And I think having some kind of professional management at that top level, you know, could be helpful. At the same time, you know, we agreed with the Law Department report that as written, there were some inconsistencies, or there were things that were confusing, where it wasn't clear what was the role of the administrator versus the role of the mayor. I mean, the mayor today can, has the power to kind of appoint anybody he wants in his or her staff. And so we didn't think a charter amendment maybe is necessarily the right way to go about this, but I think the conversation about having kind of more professional management across the board, not just at the top level, I think is a good start because we see that as more of an issue than some of the kind of balance of power issues that we've talked about. We also did a little bit of research, and the research across the board shows that if you have that kind of professional management, you have, you know, less chance of corruption, you have better internal controls and better trained staff across the board. So I would say, conceptually, agree with where we're trying to go with this, but I wanted to defer to law on some of the confusion in the language.
Okay, well, all of those outcomes that you described as being related to having such a system are outcomes that we would like to see here in Baltimore. So I look forward to continuing the discussion when the council president can participate directly. Next up, 19441 Charter Amendment, Charter Review Commission.
The Law Department's gonna be supportive of this bill. This was the same, virtually the same language that went in that package of charter amendments that was turned down last year with the Charter Review Commission. What it does, of course, is that every, at least every 10 years, you have to have a charter review. It doesn't mean you can't have one next year or the year after, but at least once every 10 years, you can review it. And I would say, when we're talking about something as significant as a change in our form of government, this would be the time in a Charter Review Commission to do a comprehensive and methodical review of exactly how things should be operated.
Okay. Finance?
Sure. So we support this bill. We just looked at first just the cost, and the costs are negligible. There's some printing costs, there's some advertising costs. Generally, you see, you know, either the executive or folks on the council ask people to participate as part of the commission, and we give them parking to come down here. But the costs are negligible, shouldn't be a deterrent. And again, going back to that modernization and professionalization theme that we think is the key issue, this is one way to start to do that. I would just offer one suggestion that, you know, generally, these, there are a lot of technical things in the charter that need to be improved, and a lot of times it's the agency folks that know what those are. My experience with the one that was tried last year was that they kind of brought the agencies in later in the process. They brought a bunch of outside folks in that didn't really know much about how the nuance of government worked, how the government really works. And then at the end, they were like, "Oh, by the way, does Finance have anything to add?" We had a bunch of ideas. One of them, I just want to mention, there's a provision in the ordinance for the, I'm sorry, in the charter, about the ordinance that we have to advertise, we have to advertise the ordinance, which is just a list of a bunch of names and numbers, it gives you no context, in two large local newspapers when the ordinance is submitted to the council. That costs us $40,000 a year to advertise that. We do it in the Baltimore Sun, and we do it in the Afro, and both of those cost about $20,000 for that space. It makes no sense. We have a better budget book that's online. We go out and talk to citizens. Something like that would have been something that we'd want to pull out, could save the city money. So I think if the intent of this is trying to keep the charter fresh and to make sure we're keeping up with how a modern city should look, we're totally supportive of this, and we have ideas on what we would do even from the start if this was, if something like this was convened. And I'm sure a lot of other agencies, I would think, would agree with that assessment, I would hope.
Any? Next is Bill 19-467 Charter Amendment, Veto's Timing of Override. I think that's Councilman Dorsey. And if, well, actually, first, were there comments from either Law or Finance on this?
Yeah, the Law Department, I mean, what happens in this bill is that essentially it eliminates the pocket veto. So as long as it's still, the current process is that, you know, the mayor has, if he or she wants to veto a bill, he or she has to return it in five days, and you have 20 days. As long as there's a meeting within that 20 days, you can reconsider that and override the veto. But what happens when you guys go out of session? So like this year, you guys are gonna go out by November. What happens if we pass a bill? And he would veto the bill, like, say, in October, and you don't have a meeting. What this was is basically kick it to the next, the next term, the next scheduled meeting is when you can vote override, which means, and the practical effect of this bill is that the same council that may have heard this bill and adopted the bill, and the same mayor who may have vetoed it, it may turn over in January. And that's okay, because that's essentially, well, we're not gonna have a problem with the law in this particular issue.
I'm sorry. I think that there was a misunderstanding on either Councilman Dorsey's part or your part, because I know that wasn't his intention. His intention was not to bridge the gap between administrations and councils. His intention was if, for example, the last meeting that was scheduled in 2019 was on December 16th, and if we had passed something and then the mayor had vetoed it, the next scheduled meeting after the holiday break wasn't until January 13th, and it was still the same council, the same mayor. That was his intention.
And that is preserved here, but it also kicks into this, it also kicks into the next term.
Okay, so you're saying it has also now potentially opened up the danger of going from administration to administration.
Exactly. From a legal standpoint, we're not gonna stand in front of that if that's what you'd want to do. But I just want to make clear that that is what this bill does.
Yeah, but that's an interesting, but, yeah, okay, we will make sure that Councilman Dorsey understands that that is an other effect of it, and then, you know, we can have a conversation about whether that's something we would want to continue with, or should we fix that part.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's an important note that I don't, I'll back up, that I don't think he considered, because he wasn't really looking at sort of end of term. The example, best example of where this applied in this current term was the veto of the minimum wage bill, which was during the term, was not, was in the beginning of the session of the council, and fell on the 20, the next meeting was set to the 21st day, which is set by the council president for the year. So I think his intention was, if it's 20 days, great. If the council president has another meeting scheduled on 25 days, and it's, we're talking about like from February to March, then that next meeting should just be it. I think we should definitely talk, and I'll, you know, reach out to the councilman and make sure he's here for the next one, to figure out where we can hit that nuance, because we absolutely don't want this to go into a whole new council, potentially, and a whole new administration. But the goal was to make sure that within a term, within a year, within a few months, that the council does have the opportunity to go on record for a vote, which we didn't have an opportunity on that bill, unless the council president at the time would have called for a special meeting. So I guess it's an additional provision, but, yeah.
No objection from us. We were thinking about it in the context of the budget being passed at the end of the year, but the charter requires the council to act by five days before the end of the year and at the, near the end of June, and there's typically meetings scheduled in each of those in the time period of June. So we couldn't think of a scenario where this would be a problem, so no objection from our.
Then next is 19470 Charter Amendment, City Council Exercise of Legislative Powers.
This is the hardest, of the seven bills you're talking about, this is the hardest one to articulate what the problem is, because it goes way down into the very nature of what a charter is. And I know this is your bill, council member.
That's it.
The council member, the Law Department is unwilling to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. It makes a small change, and we understand it makes a small change, but it has a significant impact. So we're concluding that it really violates, at the end of the day, the Maryland Constitution by weakening the ability of the voters to determine the form and structure of the city government.
Wow.
Yeah. And so, and to sort of explicate that... Yeah. It's a, and so, and to sort of explicate that takes a little bit of effort, and I, you know, and I'll, I will go through it, but it'll take a moment. So let me tell you how this works, if you want it, if you want it.
Like a moment moment, or like five minutes moment?
Five minutes. Okay.
Okay. All right.
One, five? Okay, five minutes. Okay, the charter today says today that in order for, every legis, every piece of legislation that you adopt has to be consistent with the charter, okay? What you're trying to do in this bill is saying, no, 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 we're going to scrape off consistent, and we're going to say, any legislation you adopt is going to be okay unless it is in direct conflict with the charter, right? And I remember you were talking about this earlier. So what the, let me, let me give you an example of how this would work. Let's talk about the Department of Transportation, which I deal with all the time. Department of Transportation, if you look in their, at their, on their, on their, at the charter provision, it says the department has control of streets, it has control of street lighting, it has control of conduit, and it has a couple of other things that's listed. Nowhere does it say the Department of Transportation deals with transportation issues. Not there. It doesn't say the department deals with parking. Not there. It doesn't say the department deals with the circulator. Not there. It doesn't say the department deals with dockless vehicles, the scooters that we got operating. Not there. And yet, the Department of Transportation deals with all of those. It's consistent with the charter that transportation issues, those, those things that run on our streets and roads, because we have a provision that says streets and roads, it's consistent that we have, that the Department of Transportation does it. Under this proposal, what would happen is that basically you can do, if, if, if it had to be in direct conflict, and that's the only thing that would kick out a piece of legislation, you can have an ordinance that says, for our scooter program, instead of the Department of Transportation, we're going to give it to the Health Department. Or we're going to give parking to DGS, or all the other little provisions. So what this means ultimately, the reason why we say this is unconstitutional, because at the end of the day, what the, what the chart, what the Constitution says is that the voters are, when we get home rule, the way we get home rule is the voters create a charter that establishes the basic form and operation of our government. So they don't, are not required to give you a specific blueprint of how the government operates. It's just the basic form of how this thing operates. And so, and the reason, there are two reasons for that particular, one is because you, the elected officials, are really hired, you're elected to put in the details of government. That's your job. It's not the voters to do that. But more importantly, in this particular issue, is that the voters don't have the information that you have about exactly how the government runs. You know, how, how services are delivered, how, you know, what the administrative apparatus should be to deliver those services. The average voter may have some idea, but not much of a clue, and that's why you guys exist. So when you have a provision that says you, everything is possible unless it directly conflicts, what you're asking the voters to do when they establish a charter is to be very specific, to have a blueprint exactly of how government operates. You would have to have a charter provision that says, in the city of Baltimore, the scooter program has to be run by the Department of Transportation. Parking has to be run by the Department of Transportation. The circulator has to be run by the Department, because otherwise, you would be able to cast a law that would be able to transfer that to some other department. That wouldn't be consistent, but it would be not in direct conflict with the charter. So ultimately, that means you are requiring the voters to be so much more accurate in the charter provisions that they are required to provide. And essentially, by doing what you're doing, you're taking away the power of the voters to basically determine just the broadest outlines of how this thing operates. It would actually be transferred to you, the elected officials, to do that. We think that's a direct contradiction of Article 11A of the Maryland Constitution, so we wouldn't approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay. I'm debating whether or not to ask a question before asking finance, well, does finance have comments on this one?
So, we do. We were, we were confused when we first read it, and we're just kind of trying to be, figure out clearly what it meant. And, you know, based on our concert, our consultation with the Law Department, we felt that that ability to, to just legislate and move functions between agencies that could have a fiscal impact or an operational impact, that, you know, we have concerns with that. So we're opposed to this based on our consultation with law. We also wanted to remind, you know, council that even in, within current authority, you know, there are times if the, if the city council legislates some kind of new task, you know, even if that has a financial impact, and we say so in our bill report, if it passes, it ends up having a, a cost impact, and that we have to figure that out, you know, in next year's budget or figure out a way to, to manage that. So the more of those we get, the worse, I think. It creates confusion. It could lead to either fiscal impact or operational impact. So based on that, we were, we were opposed. We had concerns with the bill.
Okay, so I get that. And I understand, and I think I appreciate the point that the Law Department is making. What I'm trying to figure out is if I can articulate succinctly the fact that the need slash desire for this amendment comes from years of watching the administration in what might appear to be an arbitrary fashion, move responsibilities around between departments when the administration wants to do that. But when the council, on behalf of the citizens, when we propose those kind of movements, we're told that they can't be done. And I'll give you a couple examples. For instance, back around the time that I came on to the council, 2007, before then sanitation enforcement was done by DPW, which is where the Department of Sanita, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Sanitation is, sanitation and solid waste, that's understandable. Somebody inside the administration made the decision that there would be greater effectiveness or greater efficiency by combining it with code enforcement, which is over in housing and community development. And so sanitation enforcement went over to housing. We just had a hearing yesterday where on, on small haulers and bulk trash and illegal dumping, and the small hauler licensure program is run out of the Health Department, which came as a surprise to several people who would think that it would be part of the Bureau of Solid Waste, or if not, that HCD, which is dealing with sanitation enforcement and illegal dumping. And when I asked the woman who runs the program at the Health Department why it was in the Health Department, she didn't know, and she's been there for, I think, it was either 13 or 18, 18 years. So my point is that this kind of thing happens. The point of this charter amendment is the council would like to be able to do that, too. If the mayor and the administration can move things when it makes sense to them, we would like to be able to move things when it makes sense to us.
The difference, I think, is that you're legislating, I mean, for one, it's, it, well, I mean, consistency is often in the eye of the beholder. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna-
You're gonna go with the hobgoblin of little minds. Okay, Eric.
Yeah, no, no. But I, I guess the point of the exercise, too, is when we're legislating, we are so much more careful than when, when an executive is pushing things around executively. But when we're legislating, we, we have rules about when you, what you can do with legislation, and those are in the charter. What the mayor can do, what the administration can do is a, is a little bit more flexible. And I, and I, and I'm sort of on a, on an edge here, but I, but I appreciate, I appreciate your frustration with it.
But the point that you're making about how there are relatively few controls to ensure that when the executive tries to do these things, that there's any oversight or, you know, whereas, as you've just described, when the council makes these kind of decisions through the legislative process, there's openness, there's transparency, there's lots of input, and there's multiple opportunities for the agencies to comment and for the mayor to ultimately decide whether or not to sign it.
You know, it's, it's a great point. And the, the point of the exercise, too, is that when you legislate, the Law Department is involved. I mean, we're down here talking about it. When the mayor moves, we're not always consulted, right? The mayor just does whatever they do, and, and they do it. And sometimes we're consulted, and we, and we stand, and some weekends, I should, I should stop here.
So I'm going to say at this point, we've concluded the agency reports for these, these bills. We're going to go to public testimony now. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go down the list for each charter amendment and let, and call people up as they, as they signed in. If, when you come up to testify on a particular charter amendment, if you would like to also speak to the other, other ones or another one at the same time, feel free to just do all of them in your remarks. You don't have to keep coming back up for each one. So we're going to start with the first one, ordinance charter amendment, ordinance of estimates. And, ah, that's funny, I was going to say, I almost called John Doe of 400 North Holiday Street. The first person signed up is Don Frye of the Greater Baltimore Committee. So, Don, if you want to speak to as many or as few of these as you want.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Chairman of the Committee, I'm Don Frye, President and CEO of the Greater Baltimore Committee. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. The Greater Baltimore Committee has closely followed the introduction of the multiple charter amendments leading to this creation of your committee. To provide insight and perspective on those amendments, we created a 20-member task force comprised of business leaders, former Baltimore City government officials, former elected government executives, representatives from higher education institutions that focus on public policy, and others. The task force has met six times and debated and discussed the pros and cons of the charter amendments that are proposed. We've also thoroughly examined the charters of other home rule counties in the state of Maryland and the comparable sections of their charters that you're seeking to look to amend. The task force held its first meeting in late, late in the summer, and we'd actually had targeted to complete our review by mid-April because at that time, these bills had been assigned to another committee, and it publicly had been indicated that those matters would not be taken up until that time. Obviously, the timetable has changed, so we will continue to work with you during your process moving forward. Many of the charter amendments that have been proposed are significant issues that deal with that balance of power between the executive and the legislative branches. All of the amendments are significant as they affect the operation or structure as government. The first one I'd reference is nineteen dash oh three eight one, which is the amendment pertaining to the removal of elected officials. That is clearly significant based upon our recent experiences. And while we think that this amendment or amendment of this nature is certainly needed to fill a void in the charter, we have serious concerns with a criteria that set forth justifying the removal of that elected official, and suggest that that proposal be amended accordingly, and we certainly work with you in that area. Nineteen dash oh three eight nine addresses the number of votes that are needed to override a mayoral veto. The number change does not significantly bother us. We certainly recognize that it is higher than many other jurisdictions. But we do also are concerned about the elimination of that line item veto and appropriations, as was previously addressed. We also believe is problematic, and certainly be glad to have those discussions moving forward. Nineteen dash oh four six seven, the timing of the override of vetoes. Again, we think a small amendment to that would help address that challenge. We would need to make sure that if it extends beyond that 20-day period, that it doesn't go into a next group of, of elected leaders to take over. It would not be appropriate for that. Other than that, we see no challenges with respect to that matter. Nineteen oh four four one, about establishing a structure to review the charter at least once every 10 years. We certainly think that that also makes sense, although we do think that there are some amendments that can be proposed to make it more efficient, also with respect to timing, as well as with respect to composition of the members of such a commission. Nineteen oh four seven oh, which deals with the exercise of legislative powers, so we've just talked a little bit about the expansion of those legislative powers. We certainly agree with the concerns addressed by the Law Department and feel that there's other concerns that we have about the impact that that would have on the executive agencies and other bodies. On nineteen oh three seven nine, enabling the city council to amend the ordinance of estimates to increase items of appropriation or to add items, this is one that we do not support because we think that it significantly alters that balance of power in creating a city budget between the executive and legislative branch. The current budget process, as you know, mirrors what is done at the state legislature, and it provides that the city, but I think that that still provides the city council with significant influence to affect the outcome of budgets through negotiations, as has been discussed, or also with, by restricting appropriations. I, in my previous life, I served as a member of the legislature and served as a chair of a budget subcommittee, and we had the exact same restrictions on us as the city council can do. I can assure you that if done appropriately, and if done well-planned out, you can have significant impact on the budget, and the priorities maintained in the budget, and the priorities that you want can be expressed within that budget. It does take work. It, you don't have total control over it, but it can be done, and it's done very effectively in many locations. I think it maintains that balance of power that's needed. Similarly, we would be in opposition to the charter amendment requiring the creation of a city administrator. The task force strongly supports the concept of improving professionalism within city government and its operations, but doesn't think that there's a need for a charter amendment since the mayor already has the authority to establish such a position today. The amendment is also overly prescriptive, takes away or diminishes significant duties and responsibilities of a chief executive officer. And again, it's just not necessary to establish such a position through a charter amendment. We've had an opportunity to speak with the council president about this issue. He came before our task force, we've discussed it. Certainly willing to talk about if there's a need to make it better, but we just don't think it's needed in a charter provision. Overall, we think that the, many of the charter amendments reflect a desire to alter that authority or that balance with the executive branch, and we think that in itself itself is a significant change in government operations and brings about both intended and unintended consequences, some of which we've heard from today, from the presentations of the agencies. All of those issues are very worthy of discussion and debate, but as we near the new term of a mayor and city council, we think as a task force that the proposals should be evaluated more holistically, part of a comprehensive city charter review, one either that your committee would create, or one that could be created through a charter amendment that prescribes it for every 10 years. Certainly think that there is some immediacy with respect to removal of elected officers because that certainly was a situation that presented itself last year. So we would propose that the council move forward with the removal of officer provision, but also that, and you go ahead and create some sort of a Charter Review Commission to look at all of the other proposals that are before us, because I think they are of such a significant importance to the operation of government. There's also, of course, a number of other, quote, "good government" ideas that have been talked about for many years, and I'm sure many of you have heard of them, whether it includes issues such as term limits for the mayor, term limit for city council, reducing the size of city council, restructuring the council as far as how the districts go and the number of people in the districts, special elections to fill some sort of a mayoral vacancy, for example, review of the powers of the city comptroller, examining the number of signatures needed on referendums, things of that nature. So there's a multitude of areas that could be and have been proposed at various times. And we certainly think that the creation of a Charter Review Commission and assigning those to them are something that was worthy, and we stand ready to work with you and any commission that's established to try to bring about better efficiency and management of city government.
Well, thank you. As, as someone who has introduced other charter amendments in the past on, I think, four of those six topics that, that, that you pointed out, I also look forward to that conversation.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Donald Smith.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donald Smith. I'm a community advocate, community activist, radio host here in Baltimore City. The charter amendment that has been put forth, that number is, I believe that's oh three seven nine, dealing with the Board of Estimates. I am in favor of this because at this particular time in junction history, where we look past the last administrations in this city, we have seen that the mayor, this strong mayor system hasn't always worked to the benefit of the residents of Baltimore City. system hasn't always worked to the benefit of the residents of Baltimore City. And we hold these city council persons responsible for those things that's in the budget, and they come and tell us as community people that there's nothing we can do because we had no part to play in the process. We can cut from the budget, but we can't add to the budget. If the mayor decides that they wish to close down whatever recreation centers Baltimore City still has, and they do that through the budgetary process at the Board of Estimates, there's nothing that this council can do. And there's nothing, there's no input that the residents of Baltimore City, the taxpayers of Baltimore City, has to basically to say after that process is over with. I think that Baltimore no longer needs a strong mayor system. I think Baltimore needs an inclusive political, economic system that includes the council, that includes also the residents of Baltimore City, the taxpayers of Baltimore City, who has to pay for these things. We need a, we don't need a strong mayoral system, and we need the checks and balances that the city council would bring to it to protect ourselves from business representatives like Donald Frye and the Greater Baltimore Committee that has great influence.
Let's try to avoid personal tax.
That's not personal. That's business.
Oh.
Because corporate, because corporate power is in the movement here in Baltimore City because it's Donald Frye and the Greater Baltimore Committee that told this previous mayor to, to veto that $15 working wage bill, which would have helped those black women that I see 5:00 in the morning waiting on those bus stops in the dark to go to a low-wage job, which they have to compete with illegal immigrants for those jobs. That $15 an hour could have helped them to possibly get a vehicle. That $15 an hour could have helped them to move from out of these neighborhoods and communities that's rat-infested, that has crime, blight, and crime. To move out of those neighborhoods into a better neighborhood or community, or to be able to put that money into doing, fixing up their homes. The system that we have right now is ripe for corruption, and we have seen that corruption take place because there was no checks and balance as far as the city council or the residents of Baltimore City to be able to push back on the influence of corporate philanthropists and business power and special interests here in Baltimore City. We see this happening now because as we are talking about crime and grime and all these other things, we've seen development being, is being used as a tool to push and to remove a problem here in Baltimore City that this administration and previous administrations over the last 30 years or more have helped to create by disinvesting from those communities as we build up downtown in a water line, and we giving tax breaks, tiffs, and pilots to billionaires like Kevin Plank of Under Armour to build another white city that is, that does not include any low-income development. We could go back to the deal with Harbor East. They said, "We give you $3,000, $3 million, build that low-income housing offsite," but it cannot exist here. So, we can no longer have Baltimore as two cities, one black, one white, one wealthy, one poor. Systematic, intentional disinvestment in Baltimore City. So, I'm in favor of the changing of the, the ordinance for the Board of Estimates to make it much more inclusionary. That way, the city council can come to us, and they can explain to us, and we can hold them responsible for what decisions that they made, but if they not at the table, and they come out to us to question, and we question them, and they can't give us answers, our question would be, "Why you did you in the first place?" If you don't have that power to basically to have a positive effect in changing not just the lives of one part of Baltimore or certain parts of Baltimore, but everybody in Baltimore, and mainly those who have been underserved the most and for the longest period of time because the situation is in this Baltimore City right now, our people turn it off because they have been receiving so little for so long that they have low expectations, and low expectations of this government and this body to be able to do the things that are necessary to make their lives better, not for themselves, but also for the next three generations, and that's how we look at things. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Akil Patterson.
Thank you all. Akil Patterson, I am the founder of Community Advocacy Consultants. Oh. It's all, thank you. So, the first one, 19-0441, which is the Charter Review Commission. I do believe fundamentally that this is needed. What I do, what I believe that the commission should do, though, is not work on just the appointments of individuals, but actually working with the elected officials for each district to then have a representative be appointed from those districts so to make sure that there's balance and fairness throughout the city to actually look at the parameters of the council charter amendments. So, that was my only recommendation on that one. On the ordinance of estimates, oh, he was checking with Casey to see if she got it down. The order of, the ordinance of estimates, I, I, I hear the Office of Budget and Finance, but if I remember correctly, Eric Costello and the council literally had to remove OBM from the, the, the process completely in order to have a negotiation happen about two years, was it three years ago, three or four years ago. So, that to me does not mean they worked together. It means that someone held our city hostage until they did work together. So, there is a big difference between a mayor that is willing to work with people and a mayor that just pretty much shuts people out altogether. And again, it wasn't by choice that the, the mayor decided to give up certain things in, in, in that instance, it was more by force. It was either, "Fine, we'll just remove the Office of Budget Management altogether, and we'll all just sit here and look dumb until somebody answers our questions." That's what happens. And that's why I believe the ordinance of estimates is needed because we do have to delineate between how we are being responsible to our constituencies across the city, and if the mayor is going to have, or the mayors will have to actually be responsive to them. And most likely, it is consistently, "Well, the council didn't want to do this," or "The council didn't do..." It always comes back to the group as opposed to the individual. And so, we do need to make sure that those parameters are there so we can understand and comprehend what the mayor's office was trying to do and what the council might be trying to do. And that's why we have a council president who is supposed to kind of organize, manage, and strategize with his body, or their body, excuse me, I should not use gender language here, with their body as opposed to the mayor who deals with their body. Again, delineation of powers is part of every, actually, our constitution here in the United States, and that constitution supersedes even our home rule, if I am correct. So, we do have to make sure that we are looking at those. The city administrator, I am firmly in favor of, and this is 19-0382, the city administrator, I am firmly in favor of. I just believe that if we are going to do this, then we have to also remove certain things from the mayor's office completely. You, there is no need to have, and I just, I'm only using the two most recent people. Jim and Pete oversaw a bunch of agencies themselves. Well, if you have the city administrator, then you wouldn't need a Jim and Pete to oversee those two, those bunch of agencies. You have a city administrator that they, they report up to. So, it becomes a line, it becomes a line item kind of thing where here, here's all the agency heads, they all report to one individual, and that one individual then comes back to both the mayor and the council to then report out what their findings are. Because we do have a serious issue in this city with customer service. Our, the constituencies of this city are the customers, and the city administrators or the city agencies are the people providing the services. And when you call DPW, and then you call DOT to figure out who has the pipe that comes from the, the, from, out from the ground, it is the most annoying thing. You have a 24-hour runaround to figure out who does actually own that pipe. Is it, and I'm talking about just the, the water spick, I can't think of the word right now, you think of all that education I get, and I can't remember the valve that comes from the top of your house down. What is it, the water spigot? I don't know. Yeah, that. So, when it comes down and it goes into the ground, is that DOT or DPW? And they will both give you the same answer. "That ain't our problem." So, that means that we do need to have some sort of level of accountability. And also, if we deal with DOT and the street cuts, I mean, that is an issue day in, day out. Street cuts doesn't talk to DOT, and DOT doesn't talk to DPW. And, you know, we have a issue in this city that is not about getting things done, it's about ultimately people taking responsibility. And if people continuously fail to take responsibility and hold themselves accountable with inside their agencies, what makes you think anybody or any individual legislator is going to take responsibility? It's just not going to happen. Most people do not. So, again, I am in favor of those three. The other ones, I will not make, weigh in on because I, I did not feel as though as I can, but I will ultimately say this is that I have a question for the Law Department.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, as the Law Department was talking to you guys, and they said that a mayor or an individual mayor wants, they found to be a convicted, of either being convicted of a felony, does that mean that it was only the conviction, or was it that they had agreed to the conviction? So, is it just the, the fact that the, the, the mayor would have been convicted by a body, or is it the mayor has pleaded out to the conviction, which is two separate things in terms of their...
I'm going to refer that question to Elena.
Well, conviction is a conviction, whether, whether she enters into, or he or she enters into a plea agreement that results in a conviction for one offense or, or is found guilty in a court of law, they're convicted there as well. Sometimes a plea agreement doesn't involve a conviction if they agree to a probation before judgment or something like that. So, it really depends, it's a case-by-case basis, and it's very dependent on what the actual deal is.
Okay. All right, thank you. I, again, it was just more of a, a thought process as we go through that, because obviously the previous administrator, this, pretty, previous city executive would pled out as opposed to the administrator from three mayors ago that came in and they had a deal and they, they willfully left the office. Again, it does not mean that they have, they didn't take the conviction, they did not yet take the convictions at the time they were in office, but they subsequently did take the convictions, correct?
So, they, yeah, I mean, if, if they leave office prior to a conviction, then there's, you know, we're done. Yeah. But, um, there's no need to do, go, you know, consult with either procedure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Also, I should add, recognize that we have been joined by two other members of the mayor's office, Matt Segman and Nicholas Blundy. And I was, just as I got ready to recognize Dom McIlhley from the council president's office, he stepped out of the room. So, I'm going to recognize Dom now that he stepped back into the room. The, the, the last person that I have signed up to testify is Dan Sparacco, the last person to testify tonight.
Yeah, there was a lot of, there was a lot of clipboards out there.
Okay. All right, we'll get, we'll get those.
Thanks for, thanks for hosting this committee, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I am an attorney. I used to work in the city law department, so I worked with Victor and Elena, and then I was also an assistant deputy mayor for operations, and in that job, I would go to Bob and, and ask for, "Where's the money, Bob?" And I think it's great that this conversation is being had, and I think it's important to look to comparisons. I think overall, the question is accountability. So, on the budget, for example, lots of other county councils and city councils have direct say over the budget, but if you look at Montgomery County or Prince George's County, those are full-time jobs, being a member of the city council. They have larger districts. The bar of entry is higher, the resources are greater, so you're asking people to take accountability, and they are in a position to have it. I think Councilwoman Burnett said the most important thing here. "I want to be accountable." That is the most important thing here. However, over time, and for those who have been in the city government for 10 years or 20 years or 50 years, that has not always been the case. Not everyone in this room has wanted actual accountability, and the accountability has allowed, laid exclusively with the mayor. If we're going to change that, that's a broader conversation about the role of this chamber in the structure of government. Looking at a chief administrative officer, it's a similar issue. Plenty of other counties and cities have that, but what they don't have is all the other stuff, all the other boxes on the org chart that we do. So, if you look at any of the counties in Maryland that have this, they don't have a board of estimates. They don't have an elected comptroller. They don't have a council president. So, you adding a city administrator to our current arrangement just further diffuses accountability, because that person doesn't have final say over housing, doesn't have final say over contracts, doesn't have final say over the budget, because it has to get routed back to the Board of Estimates, and then back through this chamber, and then back to the mayor's office. It makes no sense, okay? The structures that use a city administrator, it's very simple. Mayor, council, city administrator. That's it. You know who is actually accountable, and you would clear out, if you want to go down that route, you have to clear out the excess. And by the way, that's a, this is a much more complicated and controversial proposal than most have talked about, and if you, unless you listen to Larry Young in the morning, in which case, you know very well. It's a very complicated topic. And if you go talk to Kurt Schmog, when this was proposed to him, he'll tell you why. He found it personally offensive that someone would say, "Now that I'm mayor, we need an administrator to do the real work." There are lots of questions about this. Fundamentally, it's a political problem we have, and we have lost faith in our electoral process. If we thought tomorrow we were going to elect the best mayor possible, we wouldn't need this. That's my view. But if you want to go down this route, you can't also have 15 other people with half the responsibility. The biggest picture here, I would say you've got to have a, you've got to have a, a charter commission right now. You know, we are asking fundamental questions about how this government works, and for 50 years, government here worked very simply. You had a mayor, you had a finance director, and you had a council president who was simply there to wait until the mayor ran for governor. And if far in the background, you had this chamber, the city council, okay? Basically irrelevant, okay? William Donald Shafer had himself, and he had the guy Charles Benton, who the building right across the street is named after, okay? Charles Benton rearranged this entire building, okay? It used to be the comptroller, it used to be that Bob, as the finance director, worked for the comptroller. And the finance director that was Shafer's finance director had taken that job and made a finance department. So, that's generally a good thing in my view, okay? But it removed all the juice out of the comptroller's office. So, you only needed, and that's why for that, all of that 50 years we've had comptrollers, we've only had two, and they haven't had much to do or much to say, okay? So, the system we have now, it's all in the mayor, absolutely. Now, where, where are we? We are in a city hall where, I'm sorry to say, I love you guys, but let's face it, the city has broadly lost total faith in our government and this building. We have very serious challenges that we have no easy answers to. And best of all, we have a city council that, again, wants to be accountable. People who actually want to read the budget and understand how this government works and make it work better and get their hands dirty. So, that raises very serious questions about where are we going? So, what is the role of a city council in our government, okay? Who is the chief executive, and what do they want? You know, by the way, you know, it's not up to poor Bob and Victor and Elena here to decide these questions. Like, there's a mayor. They need to be sitting here testifying, or somebody saying, "I have a vision for this government, and this is what I believe it should be." And the challenge we have right now is that we're in the middle of an election season. We don't know who's going to be mayor, and a lot of my friends on the council have all decided they don't want to be on the council anymore. And so, I don't know, and you don't either. Is there a majority on this body for any of these changes? of these changes? Who's going to be the next council president? What's their view of what this chamber should be? We have people running for mayor who want things to stay absolutely the same, we have people running for mayor who want things to be drastically different, we have people running for mayor who have no idea because they've never worked in this building before. And the only way to answer those questions is with a broad charter commission that gets started and has to face the fact that we're going to have an election. And then, the bottom line, you know, this is not technically true, but I don't believe this chamber will have the legitimacy to go rewrite all of city government between May and November, because it'll be almost a lame duck session. Whoever the council president is now won't be, it's very likely whoever the mayor is now won't be, it's very likely multiple people who are sitting in the council chairs won't be council members, and will have no real formal way to know what do all the new people who are going to take these jobs, what do they think? This is a big question. So, a commission is a way to bring people together and answer these questions. And very fundamentally, and I'll end here, this whole conversation and all the big issues that the council has been dealing with, really for the past four years, since 2015, we had this cataclysmic failure of this government, but we've also had a huge conversation about the role of government in the country. So, all of our local conversations about pilots and TIFs and how we fund affordable housing with tax credits and blah, 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 okay? Well, now we're watching this presidential election, and we got Mr. Bernard Sanders, and we got Elizabeth Warren, and they're articulating a totally different view of government, much more robust, and it's the kind of vision that I hear from some members of this council, we should spend directly on housing, we should, we should, we should handle our tax policy very differently, we should have a more robust government. The problem is that City Hall today isn't built to be robust, but we want it to be, and you all want it to be, and that requires rebuilding it from top to bottom. So, I'm very excited with what you're doing, there's a lot of work to be done here, and I think, I think you need a greater convening to make this happen, and I, I'm here to help however I can. Dan Sparacco, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Lou Fields. And you're not signed up on any of the sheets back there either?
I may have some, well, but I did sign up, I was, I signed up.
Okay. Well, okay.
Ace, it's Washington.
Oh.
Ace on the case with my mom.
Okay. All right, I have Ace on the Case as the address for Donald Smith, so, okay, I got, that makes sense now, okay. All right, I thought that was the name of the organization that Mr. Smith was with, but, all right, Mr. Case, you can come up after, after Mr. Fields, okay?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and committee members. Thank you for this insightful piece of legislation, but also, thank you for having a public hearing so we as citizens get a chance to listen and learn what these bills are all about and maybe add our different perspective. I would just say this, that just because something is permissible, doesn't mean it's honorable. And what we have seen in Baltimore, that's my good friend Ace, he's just opened a business up on Pratt Street, it's called Bun's Sports Bar, right there at Pratt and Coward. What we have seen here in Baltimore in just one decade is two mayors indicted. That tells us, in our lovely city, that all is not lost, but something is wrong. In a city that in one decade, two mayors plead guilty. That says the legislative branch must act, and I appreciate what you're doing. I think Baltimore is a city that needs reform. And when you look at policies that may go back, as someone said, to the days of William Donald Schaefer, may he rest in peace, or it may even go back to the eighteenth century, some of these outdated charter laws that we live under. Many of us as citizens really have a big issue with how the budget process works. We wait until it's almost too late to get what's called taxpayers' night, and you can wait four hours and still don't get your two cents worth in. I would advocate that the budget, once it's done by the city agencies and they're submitted to the mayor, it should come to the city council at the same time. The open dialogue time for us as citizens to talk about that budget, which is so detailed, we need a lot more time than we have. And unfortunately, many of the taxpayers and citizens of our city, they don't have a chance to read all the different line items going where with our money. You could look at this budget, three billion dollars, and say it's not enough money, but if you look closely, you'll find money going out of every window to places that we're not getting results. In your household, when you run your budget, you pay for the service and you expect the quality of service. We are paying city agencies today and not getting the quality of service, and that's been going on for decades. So, I'm going to be quick and just say, I support this bill number oh three seven nine, yes. I also support bill three eight zero and bill three eight one. As relates to the bill concerning having a city administrator, with the people we elect by vote do their job, that's the administration we expect for our vote. And that's what we do, we vote for you guys, and if you guys can't check the mayor, we in bad shape, because we can't check the mayor. We can't even get a phone call from mayors, answered or returned sometimes. So, the citizens who vote, who use our vote to put you in those seats, you must take more authority in this city, particularly now as we look back over the last decade and what we've gotten. Three hundred, three thousand people murdered, every agency's got problems, can't get an audit, we don't know who's in charge, you know, it's like revolving doors with the police department. If the city council doesn't step up and take charge of some of the things in our city, we're going to be even looser than we are now. So, the good news is this, we elected you folks, we're relying on you folks, and we got y'all back. So, do what you got to do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Case?
I'm a visitor, I'm from the city by the bay, a city called San Francisco, and I've been in city politics for over twenty-five years. I may look young, I'm sixty-five years old. They say black don't crack, but I guess it don't. But I'm very prejudiced to be here in your chambers here for the first time, thanks to Lou brought me down here. Mr. Frye came to my daughter's establishment and ate there, and it is the only black establishment on East Pratt. So, I'm from San Francisco, and I'm not going to hold you long, but in our, in our city council, we don't have a council, we have a board of supervisors. And I read about, when I came in April to visit my daughter for the first time, I read about the corruption here in this city, I read about the black mayor, she happened to be black, but still corrupt. But the bottom line is, when I was flying back, it said that she was stepping down, and when I came back, she's been convicted, and now I come here to the chambers here, and I'm seeing that they are trying to have a charter change. So, I'm not going to speak long on it. In San Francisco, you, you only get three minutes, and that three minutes come, bing, you over with it.
You're bringing that with you from San Francisco.
So, I'm just going to be briefly, I'm here supporting that you do have a CAO, because the CAO in my city and county, which I know very well, and I know the mayor, I know them all, is over five, no, twenty-five departments. So, that frees up the mayor to take care of your other business. See, the bottom line, in my opinion, right now, my opinion don't mean too much, you need accountability here. The mayor, y'all eloquently said so much here, the mayor, they act like he don't, they don't care because they just continue on and there's no accountability. So, you do need a CAO. You also need accountability here, and I'm getting kind of nervous because I think my time is coming out, but I'm supporting, Mrs. Name is the president of, Scott, and some of the things that y'all put here is that we do need accountability here. When I say we will, I'm going to have a dual role right now because my family own a business on, on East Pratt. I'm getting a hashtag saying from Fillmore to Baltimore, and I'm trying to do the best I can. But I do support having a CAO, I do support that the, let's see, let's see, we go through here, the other thing was reviewing and appointing, excuse me, I just don't want to, or removing of your, of your mayors. See, in San Francisco, they have boards of supervisors, where they have subcommittees and that type of thing, so the mayor could take care of the day-to-day process. And I'm persistent, and I will be coming back in, in due form, but I just wanted to make my appearance today to say that I'm ace on the case and I'm in your city, and I happen to be, as you see, a black man, so therefore, I was born black, I wake up black, and I go to sleep black. I also noticed that your population is less than ours, we have over nine hundred thousand, you have eight hundred thousand, but your black population is way higher than San Francisco's, we less down at six percent. We, gentrification really tore us up, you know? It's like urban renewal, we call it Negro removal in the city by the bay. And I'm not trying to change your city, but I think that I could use some, you could use some expertise, I know you notice about, you're saying outsiders coming in, well, my daughter owns a business here, and I do got some problems there, I spent over damn near three million dollars. I say, baby, have you got any money from the city and county? They said, no. I say, well, I'm going to have to go check on that, because if they're the only black business, I think there should be some monies available to show that you're trying to help at least black businesses there. It is totally ridiculous, I see all the foot traffic there, but I see nobody that looks like me own none of those businesses. But we have all type of people coming to the business. You did mention to me, one of your dignitaries did come through our business, he was enjoying himself at the Bun's Sports Bar and Grill, two hundred East Pratt Street, right under, right under the Renaissance. You could come into the gallery way. So, I will be, yeah.
Hey, I know where you're going.
Yeah, right there. You know, we had, what was it, Tank came down there, the fighter, and we ride by all the athletes and hotels, and it shouldn't be, no way that we're not included in what's happening in your, in your business. As I mentioned back in the city, our mayor is London breed, okay?
We really have to stay on the topic of the charter.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, okay. But the charter, I will be back, so thank you very much for letting me have a few minutes here. My name is Ace, and I will be on your case.
Thank you. I do want to do one last piece of business, which is to announce the next work session for the committee. We will reconvene to take up all these pieces of legislation on February third at six thirty PM at Notre Dame University of Maryland. Specific details will be posted on Legistar. If you are on social media, please like the Equity and Structure Committee on Facebook, where we will also be posting information about these hearings. One last bit about the Equity and Structure Committee, as I think Mr. Frye had made reference to, many of these pieces of legislation had, when they were first introduced, been assigned to another committee from the council, and the chair of that committee had said publicly that he did not believe that it would be a good thing to hear these bills until after the primary election in April, and that it would still give us plenty of time to discuss them before the point in July at which we would have to pass them if they were to be on the ballot in November. I want to take this moment to publicly thank Council President Scott for realizing that that is not the best way to approach the conversation about how we structure our government. As Mr. Sparacco pointed out, it will be harder to have the moral high road to complete this conversation after an election where we at that point are already know, for all intents and purposes, who will be the likely occupants of several offices, that we are discussing what powers those offices should or should not have. I have said publicly, I believe it is important that we have this conversation as objectively as possible, because once we know who is going to be mayor, who is going to be the other members of the board of estimates, then it is harder to separate out the policy from the individual personalities when we're having these discussions. I will also say that I have heard other people mention the desire to have a charter commission formed to consider these proposals. Whenever I hear people propose that we create a broader commission that would be representative of the whole city and have people who have experience and understanding of city government to make recommendations to a body that is made up of individuals from across the city who all have experience dealing with city government, and most importantly, were sent here by the citizens, I, I think that we might be overthinking the problem. And so, I want to say publicly, I am perfectly comfortable with this committee undertaking the work that has been assigned by the council president to not just review these pieces of legislation, but to do the outreach and to gather the input from the public on how we should treat each of these proposals. But then, when the city council acts, it acts with the legitimacy of six hundred thousand-plus citizens who we all represent, either in their individual districts or the council president for the city as whole. And with that, I would say, I am, actually, I will move to recess this hearing, or I will ask for a motion to recess this hearing.
I'll take a motion to recess.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, we will be recessing this hearing until February third. Thank you all for attending, please check the area around your seat to make sure that you have not left anything that you brought with you. And since the building is now closed, please exit promptly to the first floor main entrance. Thank you for visiting City Hall.